At this time, I will convene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for April 20th, 2023, beginning at 7:01. Members of the public may access the meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Our board meetings are open to the public and we welcome everyone and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by the security. We welcome civil and civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Will Banks in leading us in our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on the agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net. Board meeting speaker request no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
No, ma'am, not regarding agenda items.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Next, we will consider administrative appointments and ratifications. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointments of the individual discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal for Jones Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language.
I move approval of the ratification of administrative appointments. Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Will Banks and a second by Mr. Hibbs. Any discussion? Motion passes in the affirmative. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and this... (laughter) Yes. Okay. Thank you, President Fowler. I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal for Jones, Emilia Alonso. Emilia attended, and you'll see her bio there, University of Texas in El Paso for Bachelor of Arts, UNT Denton for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership, most recently an Assistant Principal at Peach Elementary. Has taught fifth grade, math and science, sixth, seventh, and eighth math in different districts. So, Emilia, congratulations and best of luck.
Next on our agenda are the action items. Dr. Cavassos?
Action item A is for you.
I don't want to do this. Action item A, consider superintendent retirement agreement and recognition. Do I have a motion?
Thank you, President Fowler. The boards received the voluntary retirement agreement and reviewed it, and at this time, I would move to accept the voluntary retirement agreement is proposed and to recognize Dr. Cavassos's service to the AISD at his retirement celebration as discussed in closed meeting.
Second? All right, we have a motion by Mr. Chapa and a second by Ms. Mays. Do we have to vote? Please vote. Motion passes in the affirmative. Action item B is to consider changes in the board handbook.
Thank you, President Fowler, and this went through our Governance Committee, so I'll pass it to Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, and I will in turn pass it to Ms. McMurro for presentation. I will say that, just as back by way of background, the Governance Committee annually reviews the board handbook and continually refines it, and would like to thank the members of the Governance Committee for their hard work this year, but also Ms. McMurro took the laboring oar on this year's edition, and so I will let her do the presentation.
Thank you, President Fowler and Mr. Chapa. I would like to motion to approve the board handbook as presented.
I second.
I have a motion for Ms. McMurro and a second for Mr. Will Banks. Any discussion? Motion passes in the affirmative. We now move on to our first discussion item. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and tonight we bring a discussion item for our financial, 2022-2023 financial update as well as 2324 preliminary, and that's a key word. It's a view forward for our budget update for the 2324 school year. Still a lot of variables there, but it would be important to review that with the board tonight, so I will ask Ms. Moss to start us off.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Good evening, President Fowler and trustees. Again, typically every board meeting, we bring you a brief update of the current year's finances, and I'll do that tonight, and then we have Ms. Martin here who'll talk about our next year's budget development. So this is a familiar screen for you. Shows the Finance Department items that are in the consent agenda. The budget amendment is as of April 2023. The financial report and the monthly investment report are as of February 2023. This slide shows the highlights of our amendments by the board up to tonight when we're asking you to amend it through April. The changes are a positive amount of $19 million for the year to date. That includes the attendance rate. We've seen a slight increase in the attendance rate from budget. We've talked to you about the taxable value increase that we've had. We've adjusted the budget for that. We've also adjusted it, if you recall, for ESER II funding, the $14 million that we supplanted, and tonight's budget amendment includes payroll savings. We've talked about that on several occasions. We have decided to go ahead and amend it through January of 2023 based on our estimate of what our vacant positions are saving us so far. We will continue to monitor that and our open positions, and we'll bring another amendment, probably the final budget amendment. We will include that amount. And so typically, we break this down for you. Our general operating budget and our capital projects budgets both have cross-functional changes. There's no change, or we're not asking you to amend the debt service budget or the child nutrition budget. For the general operating budget revenue increases, we have done a small adjustment to the investment income. We've amended that prior to this amendment, but we're doing another adjustment. Prior year state revenue, we're amending that by about 1.6 million. That's a result of the property value audit that was completed, and ESER indirect costs, we're adjusting those, that revenue slightly. We're decreasing state revenue, and on the expenditure side, we're increasing recapture a little bit. We continue to monitor that, and we are also decreasing the expenditure side based on those vacant positions and the payroll savings. On the capital projects budget, we are increasing revenue and our investment income, and again, we've talked about how our interest rates have increased. It's significant in the capital projects fund, so we're increasing that revenue based on our estimates. And the CVPA building enhancement, that is in the consent agenda items as well. I think that's roughly 800,000. The net change to capital projects is 13.5, and the net change to general operating is This is just an overview of our general operating budget, shows you where the adopted budget was and the revised budget. That deficit is now decreased to 16.9. Again, I mentioned the payroll savings. We hope to, and I'll share with you on a feature slide where that $19 million deficit or the 16.9 million deficit will actually, in our estimation, turn into a surplus. This is a more detailed view of the budget amendment. If you'll look in column one, that's our original budget. Column two is the amendment as we're proposing to you tonight, which is, will change that bottom line to 16.9. Our projected year-end forecast, which is very preliminary, is where we, you see, we added under reclassified salaries to ESER. We add an additional $10 million for our ERP system that we're looking at, and also we included what our estimate is for the other payroll savings. That's the line that shows the $31 million decrease to expenses and salaries for a estimate of 12.8 million. Of course, that is subject to change, and as always, I like to share with you that information and how it looks without ESER included. So that last column shows you that if we didn't have the ESER federal funding, we'd have a deficit budget of 24.2 million. This again is another familiar slide. The only adjustment here, we adjusted the indirect cost in a small amount, and we also added on that third bullet there, the 17.6, we added the ERP system, the $10 million that we're estimating for that. This is a overview of our debt service fund. You'll see that we're looking at a surplus of 6.5 million, and if you, you'll recall back in October, the board amended the budget for a 4.6 million redemption of Series 2014 bonds. You can see in column B that 4.6 is illustrated, and the net savings in interest by doing this redemption is 1.6 million to the debt services budget, and we are looking at that cash redemption, working with our financial analyst, and that should be completed May And again, this is an overview of our capital projects. I mentioned the interest that we were receiving, and we've amended the budget as far as that. Our child nutrition fund, we are not, we have not brought forth any amendments. We are anticipating a surplus by the end of the year in that fund as well. Our ESER update, again, this is a familiar slide we share with you. As of February 2028, ESER III has an amount remaining of 83 million. ESER II has 4.6. We believe that as of after April, April or May, we should have spent down that ESER II funds. I think that went in September 30th of 2023, so our intent is to spend that funding prior to the year end. We also included just a picture of our positions in ESER. Right now, we have 274 filled and vacancies of 45. And again, we share with you our bond 2014 update. We have an amount remaining of $353,000. Projects in process of 6.3. If you'll recall, we're spending the rest of that 2014 on the Arlington High School project for the 2019 bond. And this shows a picture of our 2019 bond. We have 392 million remaining based on bonds that we have sold. Projects in process are 43 million. That is what resulted in the increase to revenue in the capital projects funding, the interest as a result of those dollars. And so next, we're going to move into next year's budget, and Ms. Martin will share with you some of the work that she and her team have done and some of the things that we've done as far as priorities and developing the 2024.
Good evening, Ms. Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. So we have started our preliminary fiscal year 2024 budget, and I do want to point out, this is very preliminary, but we had to get started, right? So we will be going over some district trends and then high level, what the timeline looks like, share with you the priorities that we have, and some budget development information to date. So for district trends, I wanted to share with you just our student enrollment history. As you can see, we are forecasting or projecting 1% decline in enrollment for next year, so that will be 55,593 will be the student enrollment that we will be budgeting for. But now, even though total enrollment is declining, we are seeing an increase in some special demographics. So for example, that teal bar is our economically disadvantaged student population. As you can tell, that has grown throughout the years. The dark blue bar is our emergent bilinguals population, and that has also grown along with our, the light, the gray bar of special education students. Now, this slide just shows historical data in our student enrollment and how that is compared to our total staff, and this is in just, in isolation with just a general operating fund by itself. Now, as Ms. Moss shared with you, as of the fifth, six weeks, we are at 92.72% in attendance, and we know administration is working with our Office of School Leadership and campuses on addressing that attendance, and you have seen that bump from the previous year when our attendance did decline. Now, this slide is just to show you how our property values are trending. The bars are showing the taxable values, and those are the values we rely on. For the levy, that is what we collect our revenue on. This is to show how we propose a budget based on that teal bar, which is the values that we receive in April. However, the actual revenue is not final until that blue bar at the end, which is in October. The line is then just showing the, how those are the values determined for state funding, and that is, as you can see, is not final until August after the fiscal year. We are expecting our estimates for April tomorrow, so we will, so we are expecting an update for you all in our, in our main meeting. So this is a trend of our, of our tax rate. As you can see, it was pretty stable, especially on MNO side for $1.04. We, there was, because of tax rate compression from House Bill III, you see that change in 1920. We did ax, had in VATRE in 2021, and that accessed the maximum additional 13 pennies, but as you can see, because of compression, this trend of decreasing tax rate will continue, especially as values continue to rise. Now, this slide shows how we have closed out the general operating fund in relationship to revenues and expenditures, and where revenue is your blue, your teal line, and revenue and expenditures is your red bar. Now, the background in the back is a royal blue background is just fund balance and how that has moved throughout the years, and just want to point out how it has increased from the past few years, but that is mostly due to the federal stimulus funding that we've been receiving. So showing with their budget timeline, as I mentioned, we've, we've, all campuses and departments have submitted their proposed budgets and staffing conferences have occurred. We are waiting for the certified estimates from Tarrant Appraisal District that we'll receive, we should receive tomorrow. After that, we will compile the budget and keep and work on this along with the legislative that's in session, but we will be proposing, bringing a proposed budget to you all on June, on the June 13 meeting for that budget to be adopted on the June 29 meeting. We will receive our certified taxable values in July, which will determine our tax rate by TEA in August, so we will, and so we will be taking the tax rate for you to adopt in Now, superintendent and staff have identified the 2324 budget priorities as shown here on this slide. Along with creating the budget, that we are, most of our campuses are on a per-student allocation as shown here. We did want to point out that there are special programs at some campuses that get an additional allocation on top of their per-student allocation. So a quick legislative update that we have, House Bill 100 has been voted favorably from the committee, but a key provision included in this bill is that the basic allotment will be, is increase of $90 for this coming fiscal year, fiscal year of 2324, and then a $50 increase for the 2425 year. In addition, currently as law is written right now, whenever the basic allotment increases, there is a salary, there is a requirement that 30% of that gain must be used for increases to teachers, counselors, nurses, and librarians. This bill that is currently in commit, that was voted favorably, increased that gain from a 30% requirement to a 50% requirement. There are also a lot of other formula changes included in this bill, but it's in various areas where data may or may not exist at this time, so for purposes of this workshop, we are only looking at the $90 increase in the basic allotment. As we were developing our preliminary budgets, these are the assumptions that we have taken into consideration. As you can see, for average daily attendance, we are looking at a 1.5% decrease in ADA, but a 15% increase in taxable values. Due to that 15% increase in taxable values because of compression, we, in our current scenario that we will be presenting you, it is based on a nine cent, nine pennies reduction in the, in the tax rate. In addition to that, just showing you, you know, our staff count and our number of vacant positions that we currently have, staffing is ongoing as employees are onboarding and offboarding for this year and for next year. As you can see, under scenario one, which is what we're calling just a current law, the only, we, we are, it is as written in law right now, there is a little bit of a yield in the golden penny, and you see that here, it's a $27 increase. So that is our scenario one, current law as it is right now, but we do have a scenario two, and as I mentioned, we're labeling it as HB 100, but the only difference would be that $90 increase in the basic allotment. Along with that, there is a slight penny, copper penny compression, so as you can see in the tax rate, it is slightly less by 0.01, 13 cents less, not a full penny, but they're a portion of a penny in, in that copper penny compression. But before we get into this, I do just want to remind you all that, you know, once, the formulas determine how much we generate locally through property taxes before the state makes up the difference with state funds. So with the assumptions that I've shared with you, we are having an ADA that's decreasing and local property values that are increasing, as and as you can tell in those two visuals at the end of that slide, both of those have a relationship to ADA, I mean to state aid that will decrease. So as of right now, in that first column, that is the same slide, same set of numbers as presented by Ms. Moss that we're projecting for the end of 2223. The second column is our scenario one. Once again, that is just current law as it is, and the only difference would be the increase, we're seeing an increase in ad valorem taxes because of the value increase, but with a slight penny, state tax rate compression, and the golden penny yield increase. Now, in the scenario two, the estimate is based only on two additional assumptions, which is a $90 increase to the basic allotment with the copper penny compression. I do want to point out on that salaries and benefits row of expenditures of 452,000, that is our projected end-of-year budget, which means we've reduced it already by the ESER 24 million, and then recognizing those vacancies. So it is, if you add that 50 million back, that's where you're kind of seeing that 504 under scenario one and two. In addition to that, based on the calculation of a $90 basic allotment increase, the only, the only change in scenario two is that includes a required salary increase, whatever that, which is a required amount which we calculated for you all. We, oh, and as you can see in the previous slide as well as here, we are seeing recapture is going to trend up. That will continue to follow, we will continue to follow that trend if we continue that, if ADA declines and property value increases. In this estimate for 2425, well, we've only added that extra $50 basic allotment increase, but an ADA decline of 1.5% and a property value increase of 5%.
So I'll wrap up the last two slides. We just want to talk about balancing the budget, and so how are the ways that you do balance the budget? Again, I will repeat that the numbers Mrs. Martin shared are very preliminary numbers. We've got to start somewhere, and we see, you know, basically the worst-case scenario, what is the work that we need to do to try to get that number where we need it to be in order to balance the budget? And absent of school funding from the state or additional funding from the state, you know, you have the option of doing the VATRE, and we've already done that. You have the option of going into your fund balance, which is not something that we recommend. We've got a big fund program that we're working on. We need to keep that fund balance where it is. We need to have a strong fund balance, or you make budget reductions. So right now, that's part of our work, what we're looking at. You can make budget reductions, and then you can also look at your revenue. So a couple of things that I will point out or share with you that we've been doing, or Mrs. Martin and her team has been working on, one is we're looking at a credit card program. A credit card program for us could generate almost a million dollars a year, so we're looking at implementing that and getting some more revenue in. We're also, the other thing that I will point out that we've done differently is our taxable value studies. We were paying for those. Now we have our delinquent tax attorneys are doing that work for us, and for this year alone, we saw savings of $137,000. Those are just two, you know, really quick examples, but there's a lot of work that we're doing. We're working with Dr. Wirtz and his team on looking at the budget. We've got all the budget requests, and right now, we're in the process of doing that work and trying to get that number down. And so some of the challenges, again, we talked many times about enrollment and our enrollment decline. You saw that in the historical document that she showed, our attendance. We are working on initiatives to get that attendance increase. That's just revenue to the district. We're working on the historical swing. We've talked about that over the last couple of years since I've been here, and where it's been there, we're working to eliminate that swing. When we... When we, uh, talk to you about payroll savings and when we talk to you about, uh, the position vacancies, we're working on eliminating that swing so that you know exactly what the budget is. And we're working on trying to balance the budget for you to, to make those decisions. Uh, of course, the legislative session and undate, unfunded mandates is a challenge for all school districts. It's not just Arlington. Um, but we have a cost management initiative in place. We're looking at our F T E management. We're looking at academic ROI in partnership with Dr. Wertz and his team. Uh, property values and recapture, that's a big challenge for us, but we're monitoring it. We're trying, trying to stay ahead of it to see how it's going to impact us based on our, um, average daily attendance and our taxable values that are increasing as well. We're looking at campus carryover. We're looking at staffing of, uh, of new positions and vacant positions. Uh, we're trying to leave no stone unturned to see how we can reduce the deficit budget. Uh, because we have a, you know, um, again, on one of our priorities is, is compensation um, and competitive compensation. So we know we still have to fit all of that into the puzzle that we're working on. Um, and that's all we had to share tonight. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any trustees with questions? Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. And Ms. Moss and Ms. Martin, thank you for this presentation. Um, on the good side, it's glad to see that we're trending to a nice surplus and adding fund balance this year. But we've got some challenges ahead, so, um, you know, looking at where we are now, if you can go back to the last slide. You know, this, you know, that one small box on, in the middle right, staffing, that's 88% of our budget, correct?
Yes.
So that's really the biggest box in my eye on here. And so I think it's, you know, as we have been diligent in staffing appropriately and look at those, uh, staffing ratios, that's going to be critical going forward once ESER goes away. Um, and I, you know, I'm looking at the number of, I guess ESER has allowed us to keep vacant uh, or excess positions, uh, over enrollment, and apply those to help on the recovery loss. But, uh, coming up with that funding, ESER funding exit strategy, uh, is going to be critical as well. But the other thing that scares me on this is recapture. And there's a lot of uncertainty with that. I think a good question for, uh, one of our later presenters, uh, Mr. Anderson is, what is going on with, uh, exactly alleviating the burden on, um, districts like us ending up in recapture, which was supposed to be just for the wealthiest of the wealth, wealthiest s- school districts. But now more and more districts are falling under recapture and we're serving one of them. And given, you know, enrollment kind of going like this and property values skyrocketing, um, that's only going to get worse and worse. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the last legislative session, they did something about recapture and then they tied the tier two yield of the golden pennies. They, um, allowed for an increase due to inflation, correct?
That is correct, and, um, I believe that was, uh, 20, was it 2019?
Or was it with HB three?
Yeah, yes, that was with HB three. And you did see some, you know, some differences there. Um, at the time, both Ms. Mrs. Martin and myself were in a, a recapture district that was paying, uh, $50 million in recapture. After House Bill three even, that went up to 150 million. So it just depends on where your district is and what, what your values in your district is doing. And if they start to skyrocket, your recapture just follows.
Right, the, the, I guess the basic flaw is going from, what do we, what are we going to, from this year, 96 to 127? You had it on your slides.
Are, are you talking about recapture?
No, the yield, the golden penny yield. So from 98.5 to 126, so a, a net gain of 27. But that's just not keeping up with the rate of growth of the property values.
Correct.
And that's something that needs to be addressed. So hopefully I, we can get an update later on what legislation is likely to help alleviate that for us, because that's a big issue and that's something we need to continue to advocate on with our local de- delegation. Recapture is an ugly thing. So, um, that being said, I think that's, I had one more question, but I'm happy to turn the floor over. Oh, yes. The, under, um, SB one or HB one, the budget bill, um, there's a 90 do- or HB, also in HB 100, there's a $90, uh, increase in the basic allotment. Um, and 50% of that is, as you said, mandated for staff raises. So in a district like us, did you have the dollar amount that, um, $45, um, if it was 90, uh, what, if that's where the bill ends up being passed?
And we do, again, very preliminary numbers. Um, for our district, it would look like an increase of about $6 million. But based on just the way the, uh, the law is written, uh, we have to base that increase on our total increase, uh, so to speak. And Ms. Martin may be able to, to dive into that a little bit more. But we're looking at $13 million increase. So we've got to base our teacher salaries on the $13 million increase, not just the, uh, increase, um, that we see based on the, um, the additional allotment or the additional basic allotment, the $90.
Right. So I think, I think just real quickly, the scenario two, there's a lot of numbers there. But basically, if we get more money from the state, as is so far being discussed, it'll actually cost us more. We'll be further in the deficit. It's, it's a, it's a very, uh, tricky dichotomy where they are providing more funding, but we're required to spend more. And so that, that was part of HB three and it's now part of this, uh, 100. So you see, we go from a 52 deficit to a 59 with more money from the state.
So that was very similar with HB three where most districts saw net gain. We were one of the losers and then it appears that that'll be the case again this year. So this time around.
And let me just add that we're just looking at the basic allotment. There is a lot more to, uh, to that bill than we've included in our scenario. So they are looking at transportation allotment increases. They're looking at some of the other demographics, increasing those, uh, F T Es as well. That's not included here, so I want to make sure that-
But that would calculate, right? You'd have to use that amount to then calculate half of, you can say.
Yes.
So it just accelerates the expenditures.
So yeah, my final comment is on the slide with the ESER positions or the, the previous to this one. Or I guess actually it was on your ESER recap. There, you had a number of posi- positions that are paid for out of ESER now that are, I assume, unique positions that we would essentially have to go away uh, after next year's budget when ESER ends.
Yes, they, they would, um-
Which would then reduce our future deficits.
Um, they're not, they're not part of the deficit. Let's just be, to be clear, right? They're, they're being covered by ESER, so it's not being represented as a deficit, as part of the deficit. I think if you, if we keep them, yes, it will increase significantly the deficit. But I will say that, um, as, as ESER ends next year, uh, we will have very likely, I think this is a safe assumption, we'll have a, a significant amount of money unspent. Now, that's not a critique of Arlington. It's, it's true of most districts because of when you got the money and all that. It does allow us to supplant. So you could supplant, um, and we will be supplanting because there's no way that's going to be spent. And you could set aside some of that money to cover these positions or part of these positions for a little longer, if, if that's the, where we end up. I do think we're going to end up with a pretty large surplus of, I won't call it surplus, unspent ESER that we're going to have to, uh, supplant that could free up some dollars, local dollars for some of these positions to extend, um, a little longer. I think the big picture of this is, is it's, it's always seems to be the perfect storm. The recapture is, is kind of that hidden that is accelerating really quickly and it's mostly the values. And, um, it, it is accelerating. You saw that slide, it was small. When we used to talk about recapture, just even when we had to do our T R E, it was really small. It was hundreds of thousands, which seems like a lot, but it just goes, shoots up to millions very quickly. So to your point, that needs to be addressed because we're all, if, if Arlington is in a recapture situation, there's a lot of districts that are falling into that situation. But back to ESER, um, yes, those positions will add significantly to a deficit in future years, but also you can supplant and stave that off for a little bit. Fair enough.
Fair enough. Right now, we're estimating about, at, at the current moment, again, these are very preliminary numbers. We may have about $20 million left in ESER when it's all said and done after year three. And again, we've supplanted this year along, alone, $24 million of ESER. So it only goes so far, the dollars only go so far. Our work right now is to try to right-size the general operating budget to get us where we need to be and not dependent on ESER. Um, so that's what, um, Ms. Martin and her, um, team are currently doing in partnership with Dr. Words and some other senior staff members.
Well, we, we appreciate the work that's been put into this and will continue to be put into this over the coming couple of months. So thank you, um, Ms. Moss and Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Mrs. Moss. Um, once again, I know I've made a couple of these comments in the past and I want to make them again because I think they're very important. Thank you once again for presenting the budget, preliminary budget, showing the transparency of ESER funding and what it will look like when we don't have it. So there's not a potential sticker shock to the public and to the board. Really, really appreciate the efforts that you've made in continuing to do that. Um, also with the debt service fund, thank you also for bringing to the board to be able to approve, taking advantage of efficiencies and doing these redemptions to give us cost savings in interest. And I, I know that the community appreciates that as well as they did approve these bond fundings. So, you know, inverse relationships, that's a term I remember from my school days. Um, I see a lot of that i- in here. And unfortunately, it's not at this point, things that we can control. Um, but, um, talking about the, the ESER funds and then looking at our student demographics graph, thank you very much for providing this information. Um, noticing trends, um, in the three areas that you represented here, special education, our emergent bilinguals, and economically disadvantaged population. I am, my strong desire, um, although I will not be on the board when these decisions are made, but my very strong desire is that the district is looking at some of the ESER funding and how they were spent and in some of those areas where they produced amazing gains, particularly in the areas of these three areas that you presented here tonight, that there's a, a good deep dive look at, are there any things that were being planted, used with ESER funding that we really want to look at continuing because it really would be the best thing for the students here in our district to succeed? So I really hope that that's part of the conversation. Um, once again, as we're looking at the trends in our demographics and knowing that this will continue to be an area to make sure that they're getting resources and staffing that, that they need to continue to be able to be successful. So that's just a very strong desire of mine for the future. And then, um, I talked about these inverse relationships, allotment and recapture all in the same sentence, just feels weird. Um, but once again, I think the biggest thing for me and hopefully for those that are watching, um, this presentation is that, you know, minus anything magical, um, I have full trust in your department and your team and what you are doing. As you have proven even leading up to this point, the value of being transparent, the value of looking ahead. I mean, everybody knew when ESER funds were coming in that they would also go away. So really appreciate that that exit strategy is already started. Um, really appreciate that you've talked about what the challenges will be in balancing a budget. And once again, not just to A I S D, but to I S Ds all across, um, the state and, and potentially farther. So for that, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the team for looking ahead. Thank you for keeping us abreast and involved as you continue to work out this budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mays. And Ms. Mays, thank you for always being the voice for all students. Thank you for that. Mr. Chopra?
Thank you, President Fowler. Um, Ms. Moss, I, if, it might be easier just to go back to the third slide and then that way I can see on the screen some of the points I'm going to call out.
Okay, is that the third slide in 2024 or 2023?
Of the very beginning, the one that has the 19 million net budget reduction to date. This one.
Okay.
So I just wanted to, I don't, I have a few questions, but I just want to call some things out like Ms. Mays did, um, that I think it's important to understand because this is incredibly complex stuff. And, you know, a lot of people look at budgets and deficits and surpluses and they immediately think if they see, you know, a deficit, it's automatically just, you know, we got to freak out, it, it's a red flag. And if you look at what we've done this year, we were projected to start the year, um, with about a $36 million deficit. Already through this course of the year, we found 19 million in reductions. And in fact, if, if, if we can, if you could skip up two slides or three, one more. So you see where we started, where we're at, and we're proposing, we're projecting that we'll end up with a, a surplus of almost $13 million. And in fact, my time on the board, um, been on the board almost six years. I was on financial futures for about six years before that. This board uses, or this district uses very conservative projections. And so it always, it almost always seems to be the case that we are looking in, going into the year and maybe adopting the budget with a, a deficit. And we continue to course correct. Our extremely conservative projections turn out to be too conservative. And we usually i- in every, almost every year, bar a few, as one other later chart shows, we end up raising a decent surplus and that's how the fund balance has been growing. So I just want to make the point that, that this district has been very financially sound and continually looking for ways to make our budget work within the very complicated state parameters that we have. This is not a situation where we're running deficits because, you know, we're just out there spending wildly. In a lot of cases, as Ms. May said, it's because of changes beyond our control. Or as Dr. Kervas has pointed out, we got a good thing that required us to spend more than we maybe would have wanted to in a normal situation. And so that, that is, you know, stuff that we have learned to deal with. If you can go over to the, um, the student demographic, uh, slides-
Can I make just one point on, on, uh, your comments there?
Yeah.
Uh, about the historical swing, the work that we're doing, Mrs. Martin and I'm challenging her team to do is to try to balance that budget. And to, we've had a big swing and we want to be able to say, here's what our budget is. Um, and that's why we're, we're sharing it out with you without ESER, so that you know how it looks.
Yes.
Right? Um, we want to say, here's how many vacancies we have in the budget. And the vacancy's total, X million dollars. And there's a possibility, of course, at the end of the, um, you know, at the end of the year when we close, that we'll have a surplus.
Yes.
But we want to give you that information so that when you make a decision, you're aware of that prior to us, you know, getting the audit and seeing the big swing and keep you, uh, informed through, you know, through the process, through budget amendments and, and, uh, routine updates to let you know exactly where the district is. Our goal is to balance the budget. We know that we can use vacancies, we can use ESER and we can use other funding sources to do that, but the goal is to balance the budget. So I just want to caution that we're not looking or depending on the big swing because our work right now is to eliminate that and to share with you what that swing is, what makes it up.
And that, and that's a great point. And I'm going to, I'm actually going to point something out. I think that reflects that really well in, in a minute. And I just want to reiterate what Ms. May said about how, how, how you do this on the fly. And I think a lot of these charts, not, not on the fly in a bad sense, but if you look at some of our trends, up until right around HB three, right around the time COVID hit, things were pretty stable from year to year. I mean, we were losing enrollment, it wasn't traumatic, tax rate was steady, property values were steady. And then COVID hits and we have wild changes in, frankly, in our student demographics in some sense, in our attendance rate, HB3 changes a whole lot of the financing formulas. And so a lot of the ability to predict what's going to happen from year to year has become that much more difficult and yet y'all still been able to do that. It, it's not, you know, not saying that it was easy 10 years ago, but I think relative to the way, what we have now, I think it probably is. So on student demographic, um, first bar chart under student demographic, I had a, I just had a question on this. We're not, it, it's, is it correct that we're not necessarily seeing an increase in the number of students who fit these profiles, but the relative percentage of those students is increasing as our enrollment has gone down?
And I'm gonna let Ms. Martin come and speak to that. She created this uh, document and added the demographics, which I think is a very, you know, um, good thing and a good thing to show, but I'm gonna let her come and speak to how she calculated that.
I, yes, there's been, it's actually increasing in count slightly, but then in, in the percentage is here. We can provide you the count information if you would like.
Okay.
I just don't have that.
I was just curious because it, it, there has been enrollment loss and what this suggests to me is, and maybe, you know, tell me if I'm wrong, is we are losing students who don't meet these profiles by March.
Yes. Or we're, yes, even though in total we are losing, we are certain special populations that may need additional resources is increasing.
Okay.
I would, I would.
Identify.
Yeah, but I would, I would just, this, it's complicated, it seems like an easy slide, but it's not. This is the net effect.
Right.
And when you get to a net effect, um, it, it's not as clear as they come in one day and then they all change the next day and it, so this is throughout the, this is snapshot.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Team snapshot.
One, a point in time, which is the last Friday of October.
And so we just, it, yes, but it's really, I would look at it more like the net effect that includes a lot of mobility.
Yes.
Can't just point to one, but this is the net effect, that's undisputed, right?
Right. And so just to point out, it, it seems like to me, and I don't want to use the term flight because that has connotations, but we are seeing, the enrollment decrease we're seeing seems to be disproportionately among s- students who were not economically disadvantaged and were not emergent bilinguals. That's correct? Okay. And then I, I, then I wanted to jump two slides forward.
Yeah, I, I think, I think i- you could see the inverse to the population that's coming, not.
No, it, it could be some of both. I'm just saying, that's what it, it seems disproportionate to the increase in the actual.
The net effect is disproportionate.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so the next slide after this. So I wanted to point out, so I think this goes to the work that you're doing, um, Ms. Martin and Ms. Moss, is, and I think, I think you, um, I think the chart sort of, sort of shorts you on how well this has been going on, is how we have been losing enrollment, but we have been very good about making sure that our staff numbers are commensurate or, or at least in proportion, not proportion, but are, are trending down in correlation to those numbers. And so if you look at, I, I think a good example here is for, if you look at 2016, 17, that, those were sort of the highest staff numbers. Um, we had almost 8,000 staff members and then for 22, 23, we have, we have almost 1,000 fewer. And so I think, I think if the chart had been binned differently, that, that would have been more pronounced. Um, but I just want to point out that that is another thing that y'all are doing, is terms of cost control, is being very careful with staffing in relation to our enrollment decline. And, and I, I do appreciate that because that is, that's proactive. No one wants to, on this board, wants to be in a situation where having to riff folks or let folks go or let needed positions that really need to be filled still stay open because we can't make our budget. And I appreciate y'all doing that. On the next slide for attendance rate, I did have a question about, about this. So this is another thing that used to be pretty steady and then you saw some, some real big changes during, because of COVID. Um, is there a reason for next year, we're projecting a lower attendance rate than what we realized this year?
Yeah, um, so we're actually looking at it as a ADA, which it's about the same attendance rate as this year. It's just that our population is decreasing, so ADA will decrease. Um, we have some increases in like pre-K for example, but pre-K only counts half of ADA.
Okay.
So that's where that difference is because in overall, enrollment is declining.
Okay, thanks for that, that clarification. Um, on the tax rate history slide, I just wanted to, to point out where we're at, how we've been pretty steady, uh, HB3 VATRE and we've continued to drop after VATRE. And then the projection is, is that we're going to go down to basically 0.91 because of compression last year, which, which my shaky math tells me is about a 9% decrease
Yes, so.
In the tax rate.
Yes, because there's, it's actually, um, there's a range. So it still depends overall statewide compression, that determines what that range is. Currently, the range that we're using is the forecast that they have right now, which is not what it's going to be. And um, there is even talk of spreading that band, because right now it's just a 10% band.
Okay.
So, yes.
But as, as projected, it would be, in terms of property tax rate relief, it would be relatively sizable because of the compression for taxpayers?
Yes.
Okay. And then on the legislative update slide, about House Bill 100, I just wanted to take a moment to, to get on my soapbox and point out that a $90 increase in the basic allotment is not even 1.5% given the amount of inflation that we have seen across the board for the last at least two years. And you know, it allegedly meets every other year. So I, this is based on the discussions we had, I think, when we went down early on about how the state has their big rainy day fund, which is, is it over, Mr. Will Banks, over 30 billion, close to 30 billion?
That's the surplus this year.
That's the surplus. It, you know, to get a 1.5% increase in the basic allotment is, is uh, is not what we were hoping for and, and, oh, thank, I've been informed it's closer to $40 billion. Um, so those are just some things I wanted to point out. I, I do appreciate all the work you do. I hope all my pestering questions that, that comes through, but there's a, you know, it's campaign season and you know, I, I, we all follow the campaigns and the discussions online and everything and, and every year around this time, the talk comes up about, oh, you know, there's so much fat at AISD and I, something I really enjoyed when I came on to Financial Futures, um, 12 years ago now, is we, I kind of came on with that mentality and, and uh, several other people did too and is, back then it was Ms. Powell, who was the CFO, walked us through the complications of all this and we looked at the budget and, you know, there's always room to do some improvement. Um, but the care and the nuance used to come to how, how this district does the budget um, has not changed and, and I think this district has run extremely efficiently. Um, and the proof is in, the proof is in the details here. We, we continually evaluate our finances and I don't expect that approach to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mays?
Yeah, just real quick, this was just to, to chime in. Maybe also in the um, graph of student enrollment and total staff and correct to your point, I agree with, with the fidelity that we make sure of having staff funded and there, but also could this graph also maybe show that there is more of a cross-sectional of a decrease in enrollment throughout the district, throughout different grade levels that may equalize a little bit more?
Yeah, said, said a different way because I think we've covered that as well, is that they don't, we don't lose enrollment in packages of 22. And so you lose them across the district and you can't just, the, the staff doesn't decrease at the same proportion because it's across the district. Um, that's a different way we, we say it, but yes, that's the case.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Mr. Hibs?
Thank you, President Fowler. Ms. Moss, I want to tell you that I heard you say something that I appreciate that I haven't heard and it, and it's talking about transparency. Uh, absolutely, I, I agree with the, my colleagues up here, that talks about that uh, the district has been responsible with this funding. It has been, uh, it works very closely, it tries to find ways to reduce about uh, the budget whenever possible. But what I heard you say is that we're going to do a better job of it, we're not going to have those big swings. It is, I love the fact that we're going to finish out with $12 million. I love that. But I don't like the fact that we voted on a budget where we were saying that we're going to have a deficit of 36 million. That's not a responsible thing to do. We need to make sure that we have that tightening and you, and what you've said is absolutely, I said amen when you told me, or when you mentioned that a second ago. That's what we, we should be about. Our, our uh, community hears numbers that the district is running this projected budget of this amount and it doesn't have action plans to how to recover it. That puts concern in them, you know, and, and a lot of times we, we come around to the spring and say, hey, everything's good. But you made a comment and I thank you for it, for realizing that ESER funds are going to go away. And tough choices are going to have to be made. When you have losing enro- um, enrollment, you can't staff at, at these full staffing levels for fewer and fewer students. You have to make, um, you have to look at your program and you have to look and see what changes need to be made and what I'm hearing you say is so welcomed. I appreciate both, both of you in, in the, uh, putting this together because, you know, uh, we do have ESER funding through uh, the next year and that's when the ESER fund threes are. And at, so at that point, um, you know, there's another opportunity and if you can supplant some of those dollars, maybe you can get it out a year or maybe even um, two years. But as you said, we used a good portion of that, you know, in excess of $20 million just this year. The vacancies uh, uh, savings that we have on that uh, slide three that you, that you showed uh, um, a little while ago, um, or early in the presentation, um, it, it shows both the vacancy and then it also talks about uh, ESER uh, funds that were used. We had $17 million in vacancies, um, uh, that we, that we were able to um, uh, recapture for those savings, um, through uh, January of 2023. Should we, and I'm asking this as a question, should we go and still try to budget at 100%? When we know that we're having these vacancies because very early on, there was a decision not to fill because there just wasn't applicants to fill those spots.
And I say, yes, um, that is something that we're taking into consideration. The superintendent of staff, senior staff is working on that. Uh, they're probably a little tired of hearing me talk about it, uh, but that is one of our challenges. They know that that's one of our challenges and no, um, it's hard for a board to make a decision on what an increase is going to be for staff if we have all, all those vacancies in there. So that's why we're kind of really analyzing that to see what positions can be closed, how long have they been vacant, uh, what are critical positions to the district to see where our, what our, uh, actually our standard staffing should be. Um, and I will say that Arlington, when I got here, they've done an exceptional job as far as surplusing teachers and when the student enrollment goes down, um, on the elementary level saying, we need to reduce teachers or move teachers over here.
Right.
They do an outstanding, yeah, leveling, they do an outstanding job on that. And so we're just looking at other staffing to make sure that we're doing our due diligence uh, when we bring forward a budget. Again, um, I, I recall the FFC committee in their um, uh, report to the board last June said, we'd like to see the budget balanced. We can balance the budget, uh, there are just different ways that we have to do it. We've got another year or two, we've got some ESER fundings that we can do that will help us and allow us to balance the budget. But I want us to see how it looks without ESER so that we know that, you know, we've got a right size and we still have some work to do after ESER is gone.
Ms. Moss, that is, that is the absolute appropriate way of going about it and what you showed in your uh, projections for next year. We need to see that raw data. We need to uh, say, okay, this is a big number. It's a, a big chunk of change and, you know, what, in, in the, your final slide, you talked about, okay, let's look at some of the areas and you, you showed three uh, primary areas, maximize, maximize the MNO tax rate, uh, uh, you know, do you make the decision to spend out of fund balance or do you make uh, you know, necessary budget reductions? Um, you led into a, a point that I was going to ask a second question on, for this next year. So, you know, um, there isn't this big fluctuation. Is there some of, once you go in with full transparency, say, okay, this is uh, what we believe will be the budget without ESER put in there? Is there a way to go ahead when the board votes to uh, say, this is what we believe will be going in or recommended the amounts that will go into this? So when the bo- uh, board votes, it, it gets you closer to that balanced budget as opposed to this vo- this board voting on something that may have another huge swing, you know?
Yes, and, and we're looking in, at that, we have to look at the historical data, right? So if we look for the last five years and we say, uh, based on the vacancies, if we can identify what the payroll savings were, um, eight years ago, seven years ago, six years ago and see what the trend is, we absolutely can make some decisions to say, if for the last seven years, we know that we've had um, 15 million or $20 million in payroll savings that we haven't utilized in the budget, it's, you know, um, uh, helped with the deficit that we've been adopting every year. That's what, that's some of the work that I talk about that, um, I'm challenging Mrs. Martin and her team to do. We have, you know, it is challenging with our, our current ERP system, but there are ways of getting that data and we're working with technology and, and HR to try to get that information.
You know, you and Ms. Martin are the experts here. This board relies upon your expertise and knowledge. When I, Ms. Mays and I are going to be gone, uh, unfortunately, we're going to be moving, moving on, uh, and you're going to have two new board members that'll come in and their eyes are just going to be wide open like deers in, in headlights. With knowing that next year, you will have ESER coming to an end, maybe some supplant amount out there, but those will go away. It would be my suggestion from a ministerate of the finance department to uh, to meet with the board, maybe in a retor- retreat format, Saturday format, where the board sits with you and you really talk about that exit plan that focuses to saying, okay, right now, we're enjoying it this year, but we have to be prepared for the next five years. Um, and I think that your leadership in that will help this board greatly to be able to uh, continue uh, to be educated and uh, adept to make those uh, votes when it comes to the budgetary times. And uh, please don't ever cut yourself short in knowing that um, your knowledge helps this board really determine where it should go. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna end, but I just want to tell you, I find this particular presentation one of the best I've ever heard in my 10 years of ever serving on this board, so I appreciate that in context to what you said, even though we haven't looked deep or delved deep into the budget itself. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hibs. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. Just a quick note, I, I do want to jump on the bandwagon on thanking you guys for the transparency. I thank, uh, thank you guys in general, but the, the transparency that you guys are striving for is definitely much needed. And I think Mr. Hibbs on his comment, and I'm always in favor of a workshop to talk numbers because I'm a numbers guy. So, um, I think um I would second your call for a workshop sometime in the summer um or in that next coming year to to look at how we gracefully exit uh from the Esser funds and right-size our budget accordingly. One other thing, and this is small and picky, but I think it helps drive home Mr. Chapa's point that he was making even stronger. If you could pull up the student enrollment and total staffs slide. Yeah, he made a comment that we've done a good job. Things have been stable and we've done a good job of tying enrollment to our budget. The only thing is this slide is a little distorted when on one scale you you have a like a tw- the actual drop in enrollment on this slide is closer to 12%, but it looks like a 50% drop in enrollment because you start the scale on the left at 50 and not zero and the scale on the right you're comparing it to, you do start at zero. So it's really a much smaller drop in enrollment that we're talking about that we've experienced. And so it just goes to uh Mr. Chapa's point of how we have actually tied that drop better with um total staff. The two are really more in line than what it shows here on this graph.
Right, and I think this um this chart just shows you basically the, I guess, the student to staff, right? Uh, we've lost 10,000, almost 10,000 students and our staff, it kind of shows you where that is, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I think just-
But percentage-wise, it looks off.
Yes, absolutely.
Just because of that scaling issue on the left side.
Yes.
So, but anyway, I appreciate this slide.
The other thing I will point out since we're on this slide is that uh the numbers that you see there are as of snapshot. And so what we're working on is showing you what total enrollment or total staffing is, um including those vacancies. Once we can get to that number and and in future years, we'll use that number.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. Moss, would it be fair to say, you know, when when looking at the the drop in enrollment, Arlington's pretty landlocked and a lot of our neighborhoods are older, families have grown up here, gone through our system, moved off. And I think that's part of what we see here. And it, you know, when you look at these numbers and you talk about enrollment dropping, the first thing I think people are thinking is, oh, my gosh, everybody's leaving Arlington, A I S D. But I don't I don't think that we can really say that. Would you agree that there's a lot of of enrollment was high, but now those people have kind of gone through our system and moved on and we're still left with our boundaries? What what could you say about that?
Right, no, I agree. And if you'll recall, the demographer, when he came and reported to the board, he talked about the birth rates, right? The birth rates are declining, so we're not going to have those students. There are so many variables um when you look at their their charter schools and you can say, well, I think I reported last year how there's about 11,000 students in charter stu- uh schools that could be in Arlington I S D. But then you have to consider how many students from from other school districts are in Arlington too. So you can't, it's just not cut and dry. But yes, you you have a valid point and the demographer report kind of shows you that birth rates are going down. Again, we're landlocked, uh not a lot of people moving in, taxable values are going out, uh going up, people are going to have to make a decision as to are, am I going to stay in Arlington? Can I afford it? You know, so it's a lot that goes into, it's not just cut and dry.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moss.
You're welcome.
And Ms. Martin, thank you and your team. Thank you for always being transparent. Thank you for all the work that you put into this. And I I really appreciate your forward thinking, always looking to where we're going to be, not just where we are now, and helping us to get where we need to be. And I really appreciate that. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Madam President, I vote that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. I have a motion for Mr. Hibbs. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Ms. McMurra. Please vote. Motion passes, thank you. We now move on to other discussion items. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, we bring a a brief presentation regarding our uh safety and intruder detection audits that are taking place. You've you've uh, this is going to sound very familiar because you've heard this before, but just as a reminder, these are occurring at our schools and so Dr. Hill will take us through how that works.
Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board. And Dr. Cavassos, thank you for that introduction to the process. Again, this is the uh school safety audit that's required by T E A in Region 11. I always like to try to put this in context to let our community to know that it's more than just these audits that are a part of our safety measures. And so you can see, we have it all the way from weather drills to the and uh the detection audit and all the things that we do on a daily basis to uh continue to focus on safety and security at our campuses. But tonight, we're going to talk about the intruder detection audit. It was issued on June 1st of 2022 and it mandated in-person, unannounced, random intruder detection audits of all schools uh in the state. The Texas School Safety Center contracted with Region 11 and we have been in partnership with them for this process. The audits happen, started back in September and then it will go through the end of May of this year. The inspectors are trained by the Texas School Safety Center and they do these unannounced audits at all of our campuses. They then give those results to the Texas School Safety Center and then those results are then given to the superintendent and then back down through the organization to make sure that we are uh compliant and doing what we're supposed to be doing. The audits come in three phases. Phase one is a solo with the auditor doing uh random exterior door checks and the process for campus visits in the office. Phase two is an escorted uh phase where the exterior doors, all doors are checked and then there's this uh check of this weekly log that the campuses are supposed to, that the campuses do uh keep to uh show that the door audits have been done. And then phase three is an escorted where we're doing uh select classroom doors where we checked uh with the auditor to make sure that they are meeting the district protocol for uh classroom door standard. Uh, the audit results and the findings, uh, we received them again from the Texas School Safety Center within five days of the audit. They include the detailed information about the site visit. They include a corrective action plan and deadlines uh where appropriate. And that again is shared with the campuses and the appropriate departments and our security departments to ensure that we are compliant there. That's where we are on that and we'll take any questions if you have any, but we just kind of want to bring this around occasionally to keep you all up to date.
Are there any trustees with questions? Dr. Hill, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, you you mentioned about the logs. Where are those logs kept?
So the logs are kept in in the different places in the school, but everyone has access to them to provide them to the auditor. Some are kept online, some are kept in binders in the front office, but they are being, they have to be accessible to the auditor when they come, so.
Thank you. And one other question, how often are these logs checked to make sure that the the protocols were followed and people initialed off and all that kind of thing? How often do do schools check their logs?
That's something that we have to look into with our security department at the secondary campuses and our administrators at the other campuses, but they are, it's a part of of what my bi-weekly reminders are to all of our staff, so.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Dr. Hill. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Discussion item C, progress report for Board of Trustees, continuing education credit. I am happy to announce that all trustees have exceeded the required training hours. Trustees have been provided literature covering the framework for school board development adopted by the Texas State Board of Education and all of our hours are current and accounted for. So thank you all so much for keeping up with your hours and doing your due diligence to learn as much as you can and and be um up on all current issues in public education. Thank you for that. Discussion item D, we're ready for a legislative update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, we uh will hear from David Anderson, our legislative consultant, uh who should join us here on the video uh soon. There he is. And if David can hear us, this is a much anticipated legislative update um and much anticipated uh review by the expert, David Anderson. So, uh, David, we're going to turn it over to you to lead us off on this discussion of what's happening in Austin that could help or hurt uh our district.
Well, I I'll let you draw your own conclusions about the help and hurt, Dr. Cavassos. Thank you, and President Fowler, our trustees, I appreciate the opportunity to brief you. I could sum this up in two sentences and we could let you go home. And those two sentences would be, 101 days have passed, 39 days are left, nothing has been decided. Good night. But we won't, we won't do that, obviously. I want to talk with you about where things are, but as we get into that, please know that we're entering the final five weeks of the session and this is when the disagreements between the two chambers, uh the tension that exists between the legislative branch and the gubernatorial governors' branch, the executive branch, tensions between the parties will be resolved. If we could go to the next slide, you're going to recognize this because it's one that we've looked at before. I've I've talked about this with you, that there are some critical issues in every legislative session, but what we do know is that every session will start and end with school finance. So when you look at this, and I've heard the conversation tonight, I I'm going to make a few comments about some things that were said, school finance is the critical issue. This time, however, we thought before the session started, six months before it started, that the other issues of human capital, the learning lag, parental rights and school safety would be critical. And of course, all of these have implications for finance because they cost money. I will tell you that while you're here tonight, I have enjoyed your dialogue very much. It's, I will tell you, it's much better dialogue than what I was listening to earlier and what's still going on over in the Capitol with the House Public Ed Committee. Your conversations with the staff and with one another are representative of the way you really get to good policy by by questioning, by by conversing with with one another, hearing about, hearing from things about the people who really know, as you have from Darla Moss tonight. It is interesting to me that as I listened to the House before I switched over to you, the best dialogue in the House was coming from those members of the House Public Ed Committee who have served on local boards of trustees. Your conversations tonight parallel dozens and dozens of trustee conversations across Texas because we are at a point right now in which there is, there is so much uh so much uncertainty about things. I appreciated Mr. Chapa's comment earlier when he he asked about tax relief. And I think, Mr. Chapa, your comment, you used the phrase sizable tax relief for our taxpayers, and that is correct. And when we look at school finance, there is a huge surplus. That's also been referenced tonight. Remember, though, that there's a difference between the the amount of surplus. There's a delta between that surplus total number and what the legislature can spend without busting the constitutional spending cap. And when you look at it, that constitutional spending cap means that there really is probably $20 billion that that the legislature was able to access uh without having to take a vote on spending, on busting the constitutional spending cap. And a lot of that is is designated uh to tax relief. And remember, the approach to tax relief is very different in the two chambers. That is, that's the source of tension right now, that if if that's not resolved, that's really why I'll be back here marching up and down Congress Avenue in the heat of June or July. The other thing that I'd say in general before we go on to the next slide is, Mr. Hibbs, you commented to Ms. Moss earlier, you made a comment about about predictability with the finances. And I I would echo many of the things that you said about the presentation tonight and about the information that Arlington I S D trustees and the community have from the administration and how it is transparent and it's well thought out. Your comment about predictability, though, I think is something that's important for us as we look at the legislative session because that's really what we want from our legislators. We want some sense of consistency and predictability with policy, but even more importantly, with school finance. Because without that, it makes the job that Darla Moss and her colleagues around the state do practically impossible. Remember where we are, that for almost half a decade, certainly for three legislative sessions, predictability and consistency really has been missing. And some of this is because of factors way beyond the control of the governor of Texas or the leaders of the of the two chambers. It really has to do with with the pandemic. It has to do with the the very tragic circumstances in which students and teachers have been killed that have moved this school safety issue up to the top. And when you look at the the issues that we have here with human capital, learning lag, parental rights, school safety, I would argue that that the the pandemic, the direct cause of learning lag, from that, we have a very direct line to some of the human capital issues that we have, not all of them, because there there are a number of people just demographically who are moving toward retirement right now, larger percentages than we've seen before. But there has been a significant exit of educators from the system due to circumstances around the pandemic. I would argue also that parental rights, the attention to that, certainly a national issue, but there was so much attention to what students were and were not doing during the pandemic that that has raised the profile of of the parental rights. And then of course, school safety, uh, a direct line back to what has happened in several circumstances around the state. It's led to this session, which is a very unpredictable session. So we'll go to the next slide. I just wanted to bring this up because if you'll look, and and I think we can pull all all five of the points up. Before the session started, well before the session started, you identified school safety and explained this very well. Of course, these are your your big points. You've got much better information available on the website, India Ginn on each of these, but school safety, school finance, the human capital issue, this unfinished learning and and parental rights. These are the topics that the Hillco team, Todd Webster, Kate Coolman, Dee Carney and I have focused on in our conversations with returning members and with candidates right up to November and then after the election with them since then. And I would say, again, I think that you are right on target with your legislative issues. Now, if we could just get the legislature to be on target with their responses. Let's go to the next one. What you see here, and and I think many of you remember, certainly Dr. Cavassos, Dr. Hill, Ms. Moss and others know that we took a little different approach with our bill tracking this session to make this uh more topical and more pertinent for staff in the district and hopefully for the trustees as well. And we went to a topical track so that you're able to look very specifically at bills that touch any one of these significant issues of significance. The education track, all public education related bills, almost 1,400. Some of these are exclusive to public ed, some touch on certain aspects of public ed. Contrast, and I put this up in the other blue bar on the right, higher- Contrast, and I put this up in the other blue bar on the right, higher education track. These are all the higher ed-related bills, 330. So you see that this is four to five times larger than the number of bills that deal with K-12, pre-K through 12, as opposed to higher ed. And then if you look at the topical issue, you'll see that we have bills, just looking at numbers to the extent that correspondence tells us something. I think that we see that there are a couple of areas that we were on target with in terms of interest. Human resources, 211 bills. The mental health, 114 bills, school safety and discipline, 228. When you put those together, you're looking at 350 bills that touch on those two related topics. There were some that we missed on a little bit. 426 bills related to governance, district administration, and operations, often the business functions. And so I know Ms. Moss was very excited to know that there were 426 areas that she probably touches in one way, shape, or form that need attention. I'm not so sure they do, but someone certainly did. And just as a visual to show you, this is our bill tracking list. This is about not quite two inches of single-spaced bills with generally eight bills per page. This is what we distribute every Friday to you, and this is what we're looking at on a daily basis to guide what we do in the remaining eight, seven, six, and now five weeks of the session. So let's jump on to the next slide. We can go ahead and just pull all of those up. What we know is that there's really only one bill that the legislature has to pass every session, and that's the appropriations bill. And in this session, it's numbered House Bill 1. We alternate. Last session, it was Senate Bill 1. This session, it's House Bill 1. I did want to take a few minutes just to bring you up here, and you can certainly see what's happened with the bill. Where we are right now with this is the conference committees, as I said when I did this yesterday, will be formally named within the next few days. They were formally named today. So we know who the conferees are. The work in conference on the budget has really been going on informally, but this picks up right now in a very serious way. We're not going to see a whole lot of those five conferees from the House side or the five from the Senate side over the next four weeks, certainly, because they're going to be very, very engaged with working out the budget. Couple of things to point out, numbers-wise, and I know that we do have several people on the trustees, on the board, who are number guys. Mr. Willbank, certainly you and I have talked about this before. But what we're looking at with regard to tax compression is contingent upon the passage of several bills, Senate Bill 3, Senate Bill 4, the joint resolution that goes with this. Anywhere from $11 to possibly $15 billion with tax compression. The difference between the two chambers is significant. On one hand, you have the House is talking about appraisal caps as a way to provide relief for taxpayers. On the other side, you have the Senate, which is really looking at raising the homestead exemption in both places, in both chambers, compressing the school taxes with those funds that are compressed built in by state dollars. The education budget for the next two years in both bills is fairly similar. What we're looking at for fiscal year '24, big numbers, $38.7 billion in the bill that the Senate sent back to the House today, and in fiscal year '25, $38.9 billion. We're talking about a budget of almost $80 billion for the next two years for public ed. Very significant. The devil's in the details, though, and what will happen with legislation that is in the works right now will determine how much money Arlington gets, obviously, but it also speaks to some of the bigger issues such as recapture, which was mentioned earlier this evening. And what will happen with recapture when you get the various moving parts with compression and additional money going into the system, either through the basic allotment or even through the basic allotment with some recognition or some inflation factor built in there. So if you go on to the next slide for me, we really are in the final weeks of the session, as I've mentioned. There's so much going on with these bills that what I'd really like to do is stop right now and turn this back to you, trustees, and see what topics we may be able to talk about and what I could speak to very specifically here in the remaining minutes we have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. David, thanks for being here tonight, and I appreciate your insight as always. And I had a couple of questions. I know there's so many bills out there, but some ones that, you know, we talked about when we were in Austin to follow up on. What is your sense, I know that one of the voucher bills or maybe a few came out of the Senate and entered the House, what is your sense of how things are going to go for voucher bills in the House? And also, something that we were very concerned about is how the bills that we were, at least were under consideration when we last spoke, had no mechanisms for taxpayer money, even though it's taxpayer money, and going to private institutions, there would be no accountability on the academic side or the spending side to verify that those things are being spent appropriately or that they're actually getting any results for the money. Any movement on that, too?
Well, you've hit the critical issue. Yes, the voucher bills are in play, and as we had predicted, all of you predicted in conversations with me about this, vouchers would move through the Senate more easily than they will in the House. The voucher bills on the Senate side have not been resolved yet, though, Mr. Chapa, and it's fundamentally the difference between the approaches those different bills take and a lack of agreement, particularly among the majority party members in the Senate. Now, if I could get my crystal ball to be a little less cloudy, I would tell you that I think we will see a voucher bill come out of the Senate within the next week or so and get sent over to the House. The House has heard the various voucher bills, the major pieces, and one of the joint resolutions that go with it. And when you put those, if you were to put all the characteristics of those different bills together, you basically have a profile of every aspect of vouchers from educational savings accounts right on down. There is a stark contrast between accountability that the seven of you and Dr. Cavassos and the staff have to taxpayers in Arlington, for school finance, for student accountability, student performance, for school safety, and what would happen with voucher bills. And I think the accountability aspect is probably going to be one of the critical factors in determining what sort of bill comes out of the Senate and what might get any sort of attention in the House. We have everything from some members who say, you know what? This money that's going to be used to pay for these ESAs or vouchers, however we want to craft, or however we wanted to call them, that's really the parents' money. And so it's not up to the state to tell them what to do with those funds. You know, that's one extreme view. You have some other people who are saying, well, you know, there really do need to be some safeguards on this. And that's the rub right down. That's where the friction is, and that's why we really haven't seen some of these bills move. When the budget was voted on by the House, there was a lot of attention paid to the Herrera Amendment. Representative Vable Herrera has offered an amendment to the appropriations bill in every session for the past decade plus. It basically is worded in such a way that it would prohibit the use of any of the monies appropriated in that act from being used on a voucher or voucher-like program. That amendment was added to the bill with 86 votes. And that was without any help at all from the leadership. The Speaker really was neutral on this. But you had the Chairman of House Public Ed, and you had the Chairman of the Appropriations Committee, two key leaders, basically urging members to vote that amendment down. And with their appropriate argument that you don't make policy in the appropriations bill, and by limiting an education savings account in the appropriations bill, you're inappropriately making policy. In spite of leadership pushing to have that amendment die, it received 86 votes. Additionally, there were, you know, 14 or 15 white lights, people who were present not voting. And I think when we looked at that list, we determined that easily half of them are likely to be anti-voucher voters based on votes in previous sessions. So we're in a situation right now in which, I think we could argue, over 90 House members have indicated they do not want a voucher vote. They don't want a voucher bill or piece of legislation, and certainly they probably don't want to vote on it. Again, it's a very contentious issue, and we know that the voucher supporters are certainly doing all they can to generate evidence that a voucher bill is really desired by a majority of Texans, particularly by a majority of people who voted in the Republican primary. So that's where we are right now on that. There's still a lot to get done before anything happens with vouchers, and I'm optimistic that we're going to be able to explain the rationale as to why they do not make sense financially, why it creates a tremendous burden two years, four years, and six years down the road for Texas, and why, without any accountability, it's absolutely bad policy, consistent with what you and others who have served on this board have said, certainly for the entire time that Hillco has been working with the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees.
Yeah, thanks. And I know that we have just been perplexed at the idea that they have, you know, the state has constructed an increasingly complex accountability system for public schools over the last 35 years, and then to give folks essentially taxpayer money. And the reason I say it's taxpayer money is it's not just the parents' money. And for the vast majority of people, they're going to receive an amount of money that far exceeds what they pay into the education system in the form of property taxes. And so it is taxpayer money, and I just don't think that would ever fly for us. It doesn't fly for us, and I find that baffling. But one of the things I really appreciate you saying is that that is something that's maybe going to come up in the House and in some substance there. One other thing I wanted to ask you about is the enrollment versus attendance funding. Is there any traction on that this session with finally moving us from attendance-based funding over to enrollment? And, you know, the reason for that, as we've discussed before, is I think COVID really showed the fault lines on this. We don't want to create incentives for people to send their kids to school sick and then judge us and fund us based on whether or not it was a particularly bad flu season or there was a global pandemic. So has there been any movement on that?
There are several bills that include some modifications to the finance system, including some that add new allotments. And many of those are now structured in a way that they would be based on average daily enrollment, not average daily attendance. However, the core mechanism is still average daily attendance. I think this is one of those areas in which patience really is required. I think if we can see some changes in some of those allotments that shift us from average daily attendance to average daily enrollment, the probability of getting to average daily enrollment funding in '25 or '27 is very good. And I know that's a long time. Four years from now, kids who are in first grade or in fifth grade, kids who are in ninth grade and have graduated. But I think that we are making progress on this. What you said about we don't want to encourage people to send their kids to school sick because of the commitment is one of the critically important arguments. The other one is that the pandemic has certainly changed parent attitudes about being in school, and we have a lot of evidence that indicates that parents don't feel tied to the annual school calendar with regard to vacations, that if there's an opportunity to do something, have a great experience, parents are much more willing to take kids out of school for an extra two or three days or four days during the school year now than they were before 2017, 2018 in a significant way. So I think we'll see some progress on that, and I'll call out Representative Ken King, former trustee who serves in the House, serves on the Education Committee from Canadian, Texas, in West Texas, as one who is really pushing that issue forward with several of the different funding mechanisms that we're working on this session.
All right. Well, thanks for that insight, and I don't want to monopolize questions here, but thank you for your time, David.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Ms. McMorris.
Good to see you, Mr. Anderson. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
I want to go back to the topic of voucher bills, specifically Senate Bill 8. I've been following this bill, and as soon as we got back from Austin as a board, you know, the bill was filed, and shortly after that, we had trustees go down to Austin again, and our board president waited 12 hours to testify in opposition of vouchers. We really continue as a board to be aligned in our opposition of school vouchers, specifically Senate Bill 8. And I just want to ask you at this moment in time, what else can we do? Or let me reframe that. What is necessary for us to do as a board so that we can say at the end of this session that we did everything we possibly could have to take a stand against vouchers?
The trustees, the current trustees and trustees who preceded you have been very strong, very public, very vocal about this, and certainly you've done that. I have no doubt that every one of the four senators who represent Arlington ISD, as well as the four House members who have significant parts for Arlington ISD, know exactly where the board formally stands, as well as almost all of them know where each of the seven of you stand on this because you've been so consistent and so unified on it. I think it's going to be very important for us over the remaining five weeks, and my hats off to Phil, who is always available and quick to respond to any call or text, as well as Dr. Cavassos and others, but Dr. Hill in particular. I think it's going to be very important for us to keep that communication going. And when I say us, I mean primarily Kate Kuhlman and me, but Buddy Jones and Todd Webster and Dee Carney as well on the Hillco team that supports Arlington. We're at the point now, next week, that it's not a matter of saying every week, well, here's where we are. It's a matter of being able to get on the phone with him as our conduit to you on relatively short notice. By this, I mean, we need Phil to get in touch with him within 30 to 45 minutes of something happening so that he's able to notify you and we're able to say, now is the time to make these calls. The other thing I think is important is to stay in touch with your other trustees, with trustees in neighboring school districts, and even more importantly, with your community leaders. I think we've seen an example of this just this week with the Arlington Chamber of Commerce and how the executive director there recognizes some of the important issues for Arlington. Having business and community leaders engage and support the position you've taken becomes very, very important. I feel that the House is solid on this. There are a lot of doubts in the Senate about how this exactly will work. I think that regardless of how votes have been taken in the past by Senator Hancock, Senator King, Senator Burwell, and Senator West for or against voucher bills, that's where we've got to stay in touch with your Senate delegation about this.
Thank you. I'm cautiously optimistic, but thank you for being in touch with us on the spot like that, and we do look forward to continuing those on-the-spot updates. I did have one more question. You mentioned that there are 114 bills regarding mental health right now, 228 bills that were filed on school safety and discipline.
Yes.
I would hope that our legislators see that the two are related, and I was curious to ask, or I was curious to see your perspective, which bills are picking up the most traction there, and which ones do you spot that align most with our legislative priorities? there, and which ones do you spot that align most with our legislative priorities?
Well, there is overlap, and I should have said this when we first started, Ms. McMorro, that some of the bills appear on multiple lists. As you look at them and you see, for instance, House Bill sixteen oh five, the instructional bill also relates to parental rights. It also relates to school finance because there are triggers in that bill that touch all of those. There is a lot of overlap between mental health and school safety. I will tell you that I'm disappointed right now that we're looking at the amount of money for school safety that seems to be the focus right now compared to where I thought we would be based on conversation when the legislature started. For example, House Bill Three, which has no companion bill in the Senate, by the way, House Bill Three is on the House calendar for Monday, and I think that bill, no doubt, will get some amendments, but will probably get approved. That's the bill, and certainly in probably every neighborhood in Arlington, there are some strong feelings about this. This calls for mandatory armed security officers on every campus in Texas. I have concerns about the mandates that every campus has to do everything the same way because all of our campuses are different, and it could be certainly right there in Arlington, you know firsthand, some campuses need something that the others don't. But House Bill Three is the bill, I think, that we watch right now on the House side. That's included. It also includes a safety allotment, and in this case, they've listened to a lot of people, including us on your behalf, by saying that the safety allotment has to be more than just an amount per pupil. It really needs to have some amount guaranteed for every campus, and then you go beyond that to recognize that more needs to be done for larger campuses. And it does have a minimum fifteen thousand per campus, ten dollars per student. There's some weights to that. And when I last looked at it, as I recall, and back to the point that Mr. Choppa made, I believe this is on enrollment, not on average daily attendance. It does include a significant audit section with regard to safety audits, and it places TEA in charge of those safety audits. And if you'll bear with me just a sec, I'll tell you. One of the points in which there's been some tension this session is who really, which agency really should be the responsible agency for overseeing school safety in Texas? On one hand, we have the Texas Education Agency, which is fundamentally the regulatory agency for schools. But TEA has not really had any expertise for school safety there until just recently. And on the other hand, you've got the School Safety Center, which was created when I was at TEA twenty-five years ago, and that's located at Texas State University in San Marcos. One's a regulatory agency, the other basically is a research institution. Both of them have some practical experience. I think there's a question here that the legislature has to answer, and that is, do you really shift TEA into multiple roles with school safety? Not only the regulatory agency with regard to the audits, but also the agency that provides expertise, because we've all seen in the last six years, the agency under Commissioner Morath has taken on more technical assistance responsibilities than the agency has prior to that. On the other hand, do you really want School Safety Center, which has been a great resource for schools, do you want it to become the agency that is also carrying the stick that says, you're not doing this well? So they've really got to determine what's the appropriate role for those two agencies, and what's the appropriate role for our twenty service centers to support Dr. Cavasos and the staff on some of the day-to-day sort of things related to school safety. Safety will get attention, has gotten attention. There will be a major bill passed. There will be funding for school safety. But quite frankly, I'm not sure that what we're going to see on the twenty-seventh of May, when they adjourn signing die, is what we predicted we would see leading into the session and when the session began back on January tenth.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
And that would be hard. When I say I don't think we'll see it, I think the delta between what we expected to see and what we're going to see could be disappointing for us.
Thank you. That's really good information. And we did ask our legislators, and I'm sure you continue to communicate, that our hope is that school safety does get the funding it needs from the state, and districts need that autonomy to be able to delegate those funds to what makes our district safe. There are some rural school districts that don't have the hardened facilities like we do with the passage of our last two bonds, but we certainly could still use the funding. But districts are apples and oranges. So thank you for the information. That helps a lot. Thanks so much.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. McMorro. Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, President Fowler. And David, it's good to hear from you again. Staying on school safety and the comment my colleague, Ms. McMorro, just made, local discretion is critical with especially any allotments we get on school safety because not only her point about the needs in rural districts are very different than the needs of our district, but when you go from campus to campus within our district, and we've got some facilities that were built in the nineteen fifty's and sixty's, and Webb Elementary that was built and just opened recently with hardened, secure features built in, just amazing the levels of security that are provided in that facility versus one of our older facilities. So local discretion is key, I think. And what have you been hearing in terms of the bills like HB Three and the others in terms of allowing districts the flexibility they need to, as Ms. McMorro said, allocate those resources where it's most needed and avoid the one-size-fits-all approach?
I think there will be some discretion. I do think that there will be some characteristics of the final bill that will include directions or mandates that every school district will have to follow. I'm pleased with the conversations that are taking place with regard to the, quote, "hardening" approach of the facilities. I think that the members, the hundred and fifty House members and thirty-one senators recognize that, just as you said, districts that were built at different times, districts that serve different ages, elementary, middle, high school, and districts or buildings, rather, campuses in smaller communities versus large urban, mid-urban communities such as you have, do need different considerations. There are several people, several key leaders, who seem to be very, very tied to the notion of mandatory armed security officers at every campus. I'm hopeful that we're going to get some consideration there about, if that is required, how districts may do that. By contracting with local police, many districts now have their own, for lack of a better term, police departments that serve the school district. In some cases, it's a very different approach in some of our smaller rural communities. I'm hopeful that there's, the final bill will include recognition that there has to be some discretion about how we address anything, whether it's the armed security officers on every campus or the hardening of the perimeter. One thing that I'm pleased with is, I believe you're going to see some flexibility about some of the funds that come along with school safety in terms of what you're able to do with mental health, as well as what you're able to do with the actual hardening of campuses. The seven of you have said this to me individually and collectively, it's got to be both. It can't be one or the other. It really has to be both to make our schools and our communities safer.
Thanks for that update. My colleague, Mr. Choppa, asked about a lot of my concerns, especially the, as he pointed out earlier tonight, the proposals for increasing the allotment at ninety dollars is such a small fraction of what we get, and given just the cost of inflation and the demands from competing districts in terms of raises that we'll have to provide for our staff just to attract and continue to attract enough teachers to fill the slots we have open is great. And as you heard earlier, my concern is with the increase in recapture that we're facing and that many districts are facing. We're not going to see the relief we need. So my questions are twofold. Sounds like what you said earlier is that we're probably not going to see the basic allotment increase much at all, but we're going to see incremental increases through additional allotments like transportation. And then what bills would you bet on that will have mechanisms that do alleviate the problem that we're all facing with recapture?
I don't expect to see much relief on recapture beyond what happens with tax compression because the tax compression does help for a while, but as we saw with Representative Huberty's House Bill Three four years ago in 2019, I think almost every one of us who looked at that, certainly our friends at TASPO that Ms. Moss worked with very closely, they were saying at the time, they weren't saying it quite as simply as this, short-term fix, long-term problem. It wasn't quite that simple. I think most of us thought that what happened in 2019 would provide relief for taxpayers and for school districts, more predictability, more stability in budgeting for probably six to eight years. Lasted less than four, and that's the one concern that I have, being able to sort of look back over at things over a long period of time, that the tax compression is important. We are providing relief for our taxpayers, our property taxpayers, because we rely on our property tax to such a significant degree. That's important, but the growth in Texas, something that you cannot control, Dr. Cavasos can't control, the growth in Texas is driving property value growth. And unless we see a significant enrollment increase in public schools in general and individual school districts specifically, that property value increase is going to push more districts into recapture and those who are already in it, where I live in Austin ISD, to a greater extent than we ever predicted. And we've said this before. We're at a point right now where recapture payments, excess revenue that school districts collect above the formulas, has become a piggy bank for the state legislature, and that's what's being used to offset general revenue funds that we go into education otherwise. Now, we've heard one school district just in the last week, trustees in a very responsible and recognized school district make statements and indicate that they're ready for, they're ready to take this on legally, the recapture circumstance on legally by basically not making their recapture pay. Well, obviously, the statutes have provisions that speak to what happens to districts if they don't do that, but I think, as I referenced earlier about your conversations parallelic dozens and dozens of conversations in other districts across the state, that's a conversation that is not just limited to that one school district. We've had several districts say the same thing recently about recapture has reached a point where it's breaking us and we need something, we need something significant to get everyone's attention that this has to change. And recapture has been in place since 1993, short-term solution in 1993 to a court case. And the people who were behind recapture, Bill Ratliff, I think I can say that if he were on tonight, he would say, recapture was intended to be a short-term solution, and then in the regular session in ninety-five, it was a special session in ninety-four, not ninety-three, but by ninety-five or ninety-seven, we would have a permanent solution to recapture to Robin Hood. And here we are now, almost thirty years later, and we don't. And we have districts that are paying almost a billion dollars in recapture back to the state, and that's not really going to support property poor districts the way it did originally.
I appreciate those comments, and that was the last of my questions. Appreciate you, and again, I appreciate your comments and suggestions on involving the community because things are going to start heating up here. So I imagine you're going to be quite busy over these next remaining weeks.
Oh, I think, I think Dr. Hill and Dr. Cavasos are going to, they're going to want to block my number here over the next few weeks, but they won't.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Mr. Anderson, I think we can no longer idly sit by and hope that our legislators do right by us and do what's in the best interest of our students. I think we have to now voice and voice loudly what we know we need. And I wonder, when is the last time that a legislator actually came into a school and observed what's being done right and all the good things that we're doing, but also to notice we need money to keep improving? But I wonder when the last time was any of our legislators actually sat down in a school and met with the principal or talked with students or parents? And I think that that's probably something they should consider. Lots of times, I think people in Austin think they have all the answers, and they haven't really done their homework. They haven't sought out questions and answers from people that are in the know, and it just bothers me that people think they have all the answers for us without taking what we know is best into consideration.
Well, I will tell you, I live here in Austin, and I think I represent what you just said. I think I have all the answers, but I don't have a vote, and I can't get people to pay attention all the time I want them to. So I do want to take issue with one thing you said, and that is, we need to start doing this. Honestly, you and your fellow trustees are an exemplar for other school districts, and there are easily twelve to fifteen other districts I could point to where, on any given week, there are trustees and district leadership in the Capitol, as you and your fellow trustees have been several times. And yes, the relationship started home. You maintain those relationships at home throughout the interim and during the session, but being here is important. And I, believe me, I appreciate the time that you and your colleagues have spent down here and the time that Dr. Cavasos and Dr. Hill and Ms. Moss and others have given to Kate and me when we called to say, help us understand this. To your point about getting members in schools, I will say that Chris Turner, David Cook, Tony Tenderholt, Sonam Jani on the House side, those members and their staff, their doors have been completely open to us this entire session. And on different issues, each one of those four have been helpful. And I could say the same thing about Kelly Hancock and Brian Birdwell at Voice West, and particularly Phil King, who has such a significant part of Arlington right now. I think you've absolutely, you hit the nail on the head here, and I would encourage you to, once these members have a little bit of time to get home and get their breath and catch their breath in June and July, I would encourage you to invite them to school events, invite them to come and flip a coin at the Seguin High football game, or to do other things that get them into the community where the community sees their engagement in the schools, and more importantly, they get to engage with the parents, the students, the teachers, the administrators, and the trustees to make Arlington ISD work so good.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I think that's a great idea, and maybe we can look for that in the fall and get some things started like that with getting them more involved in the community. Thank you for always having your pulse on Austin and alerting us to things that we need to be aware of. I appreciate the times that you have set up meetings for us, you've set up phone calls. Just let Just last night, Michael Jacobson and I had a nice conversation with Kelly Hancock's office. And so I appreciate all that you do for us and always looking out for the best interest of AISD. And I know it's a long work.
Well, I have a merit regard for all of you. I hope you know that, and we're proud to represent Arlington. The only complaint I have right now with the seven trustees is that you accepted that letter of retirement from Dr. Cavassos.
Reluctantly, very reluctantly. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Please know that you're appreciated.
I'll be talking to all of you in the next few days. Thank you for taking time tonight and letting me do this remotely so that I can get back up to the Public Ed Committee here in a few minutes.
We appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am, we have three registered speakers.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. We will call on Chris Kittle. Hi, Ms. Kittle. Let me, um... Welcome, Ms. Kittle. This second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You will have two minutes to speak. Ms. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and then please end your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I am Dr. Chris Kittle, and there's a handout coming around that is from me. I am the Education Lead of the Tarrant County Chapter of Citizens Defending Freedom. A number of progressive organizations are attempting to pressure school administrators to broaden the language of Title IX to include sexual orientation and gendered identity. This undermines federal law and the legislative authority of the United States Congress. These organizations are leaning on the misleading guidance of the Department of Education's 2021 Notice of Interpretation in conjunction with President Biden's executive order on the Supreme Court ruling in Bostic versus Clayton County. It must be noted that the court clearly stated that Bostic was a Title VII issue and did not apply to Title IX or any other law. The Supreme Court in Bostic emphasized that sex-based employment discrimination consistent with Title VII was unconstitutional. However, they explicitly refrained from applying their ruling to Title IX. Therefore, the Department of Education's Notice of Interpretation and the executive order are null because it expressly contradicts Supreme Court precedent. There have been a handful of cases further demonstrating the Bostic ruling does not apply to Title IX issues. The recent federal district court's ruling prevents the Biden administration's Notice of Interpretation and Executive Order from taking effect in 20 states, including in Texas. Additionally, a federal district court here in Texas affirmed that sexual orientation and gender identity are not protected categories because Title IX must be read in the original context in which it was drafted in 1972, where sex was understood to be biological and binary. In the Bostic case, the Supreme Court stated that the people's representatives are the ones who must amend Title IX, and therefore only Congress can amend Title IX. I ask you to consider this information before applying, before acting on the course of tactics of organizations intentionally misapplying Title IX to push a political agenda that would eradicate Title IX's sex-specific protections. Female students have the right to privacy in bathrooms and locker rooms. They have the right to participate in sporting activities that are only against other female athletes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kittle. David Jarvis. Welcome, Mr. Jarvis.
Good. Good evening. May I begin? This board proudly claims on your website that you see yourselves as guardians of the public trust. However, to guard the public trust, you must also show that you trust the public with transparent policies. At two recent grievance hearings in March, AISD senior officials prohibited the attendance of observers at my grievance hearings. When I objected to this practice and pointed out that current grievance policy does not address the issue of observers and that these officials had no express authority to ban observers, they ignored my questions, excuse me, my objections and ordered that the observer be removed. Rather than asking this board to formally amend your grievance policy to include the banning of observers, these officials bypassed this board and banned observers in a stunning abuse of authority. If officials can bypass this board and unilaterally assume authority outside current policy, there's really no limit to this lawless practice. If this board truly wants to be a guardian of the public trust, you must rein in your senior officials who have unilaterally banned observers from attending public grievance hearings. Banning observers also sends a troubling message to parents and taxpayers that this district is not comfortable with taxpayers observing grievance hearings. Banning observers does not promote public trust. It undermines it. Such lawless actions also raise serious questions with the public about the integrity and transparency of the entire grievance process. This board must intervene now and stop these lawless actions if you truly seek to be guardians of the public trust. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. Diedrich Foster. Welcome, Mr. Foster.
Hello. Good evening, board members. First, I'd like to thank you all for having me here today. My name is Diedrich Foster. I'm a senior at James Bowie High School. And as the Board of Education, I really want to, as the Board of Education, I want to push you, dang, let me restart. As the Board of Education, I want to push you to, I want you to push every educator to teach from a perspective of every, from every race, every religion, from elementary school all the way through high school. As students, we should be learning the history of all people. I had to, by not knowing my ancestors' history, that left me full of questions and, that left me uninformed and full of questions that I had to go out on my own to find the answers to. Not every person will go as far as asking their family members about their history and going onto the internet and actually taking the time to research and learn about their people's history. Instead, they will live their entire life only knowing the small percentage of history that will put, that will put America on a pedestal and depict it as a hero that saves the day, and then showcase the Caucasian man as a pioneer and more powerful than everyone else. If we teach kids from the beginning, the whole story, this will erase some of the societal ignorance that exists today towards specific people and religions. Racism is taught, not learned, and there's an opportunity for you all as a group to have a huge contribution on the fight to minimize racism as much as possible. Imagine this headline, Arlington ISD Board of Education puts forth a huge contribution in the fight to minimize racism. I will leave you all with this question. How would you feel if y'all knew little to nothing about y'all history, about the ancestors of your people, and you received hate every day for what you believed in, for your ethnicity? You all should stand up, you all should stand up for change, advocate for us, fight for your students, fight for your educators. We deserve to know our history. I'll open discussion at a later time.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. It is now time for our superintendenture. Yes, Ms. Mays.
Thank you, President Fowler. Diedrich, can you stay after? Do not leave, please.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Fowler. And just a couple of items since our last board meeting that we want to highlight, and you'll see it on the screen here. But I want to thank first our outstanding librarians for all their work as we celebrate School Library Month. Look at all those librarians. We know how important the role of libraries play in transforming learning for our students, but our librarians are the key to make those transformations happen every single day. They're responsible for digital citizenship, encouraging students to think critically, how they use information, how they discern information. Our librarians are outstanding, and I want to recognize them and thank them for all their tireless work. I also want to commend Jones Academy Nurse Sandra Juarez and first grade teacher Carlos Matos Martinez for their quick thinking recently. A student had a medical issue during a field day, and Matos Martinez noticed it and reported it to Ms. Juarez, who administered an EpiPen, and that quick thinking helped the student and got the attention of Arlington Fire Department. The department showed up, and the duo were honored for their actions. They honored them with certificates of commendation. Congratulations to this dynamic duo for quick thinking and quick action. I appreciate it very, very much. More congratulations are in order this time for Martin student Camille C. Camille created a district-wide monologue competition to feature African-American playwrights. Camille did so because she felt like there was a lack of African-American representation in theater. She was looking for an issue she cared about as part of her Girl Scout desire to earn a gold award, which is the highest honor for a Girl Scout. Camille achieved that recognition along with two other Arlington ISD individuals, Martin's Madison Scruggs and Lamar's Colleen Gladbach. Congratulations to all these three outstanding achievement recognitions. And finally, last night, I had the honor of attending our Career Technical Education Impact Awards at our Center for Visual and Performing Arts. How's that for a mouth? Our Career and Technical Education Department does an outstanding job of providing opportunities. So when we talk about opportunities for students, that these are the people, individuals, every day. These are representative of the people every day who provide those individuals with pathways when they graduate, whether it's college or going straight into the workforce. We're able to honor outstanding teachers and members of the CTE Department, recognize community partners that we've worked with throughout our school year, and their support is critical as well. And you might recognize some of those individuals because they are the same individuals who over and over shine in Career Tech. So we were able to recognize them as their annual awards that now they'll begin. This was the first time, so I want to thank Susan Patterson for doing that as well. What a great group of individuals, the entire Career Tech education team does an outstanding job, and we depend on them very, very much. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have any school board members with reports? Oops, let me try again. Mr. Choppa.
Thank you, President Fowler. I just wanted to let everyone know about tomorrow's education celebration event at Six Flags. This is an annual event that the Education Foundation puts on. It's their primary fundraiser to raise money for grants that go to teachers. They gave out over $200,000 in teacher grants this year to AISD teachers. You can find information at arlingtonef.org on how to buy tickets. And it is a private event just for people who buy tickets to support AISD. So you can expect the lines to be long. In the last weather forecast, I checked, the weather's going to be nice tomorrow night once the rain stops. So hope to see everyone there if you don't go to AISD Night at the Rangers game tomorrow night. They are close together, Six Flags and the stadium, so if you'd like to do both, I think that's possible, too. So big night for AISD and supporting our teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, President Fowler. Over the weekend, we were able to attend one of the four performances that young junior high students performed, Bye Bye Birdie. And our socks were knocked off. It was such a great production. And the quality of acting, and we also were able to see the band and orchestra involved. And although our junior high cafeterias don't have a pit, it was as if there was a pit orchestra. It just contributed to the whole performance. And we were really blown away by the students' talent. So I don't want to leave anyone out. So I do want to thank the entire young junior high family, particularly the fine arts team, for allowing our students to really showcase their talents. And, you know, some of our students might go on to pursue a career in music one day, but for those that don't, they're really instilling a love of music and art and just being able to create those memories for our students. So I was really blessed to be part of it in the audience and want to thank Young Junior High for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. It was an incredible performance, incredible. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, President Fowler. Just a couple of things. This is National Voluntarism Month, so to all of y'all that are out there volunteering, y'all, I'm from Texas now, that are out there volunteering for our schools, for our students, for our teachers, thank you very much. For those of you that are involved in nonprofits, thank you very much for what you do. And for those of you looking to get involved, please go out to aisd.net website. There's all kinds of ways that you can be involved and volunteer. Also, we had an amazing time last night at Teacher of the Year. It is so awesome to see teachers being recognized for the work that they're doing, but also being recognized by their peers. I think that raises it to a different level. So amazing, amazing event last night honoring them. And then finally, I just want to say how honestly impressed I am when students come up to the mic to talk to the board. And I'm sure it is very nerve-wracking, but I know last time Mohammed Rahman from Lamar came and spoke to us, and tonight Diedrich Foster from Bowie High School came and spoke to us. And I just want to say that I, and I believe the rest of our board, really appreciates hearing from our students because at the end of the day, the things that they say and feel are very important to us as overseeing a district. So I just want to thank them and the students in the past, and hopefully the students that are continuing to come forward. And learning at this age how to advocate for yourself before they go out to the real world, and we talk about advocating to our legislators, advocating for our teachers, what a great example and a good way to start in a safe environment for those who are teaching how to advocate. So I just want to say thank you very much for that. And I also just wanted to, in also response of what Mohammed Rahman had mentioned, that the district and the board will not forget Lamar Jashawn James, from Lamar Jashawn James Poirier, I wanted to say his name correctly. The same way as all those, these incidences weren't on campus but around the school for Tony Strather from Bowie High School 2019, same with Carl Wilson from Martin High School in 2015. We do not forget. And anytime that a student or a staff member feels like we need a reminder, I think we're all, we're all here for that because at the end of the day, we're all family, no matter what campus, anything happens on, we're all a family. So they were all a part of our family. So I just wanted to say that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. I appreciate those comments. Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. It is now 9:28. We are adjourned. We are going into closed, and we will not be back.